Reminder to introduce all members as they come up to the podium.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the indulgence of this group to bring forward the update directly to the General Issues Committee. We tend to bring things in update form to our subcommittee as a way of ensuring that we get some general feedback on pieces of work that sometimes take six to eight months to complete, and traffic is no different here. Because of the summer timing and the fact that some of this information will be going to the public as part of our Public Information Centers in September, I worked with the Chair of the Subcommittee, Councillor Farr, to bring this directly to GIC, so appreciate the opportunity to share a bit of information here. Today, we're talking about LRT and, in particular, some of the emerging work that is happening around traffic impacts. This is an update on the process we're using to determine the impact around traffic, and it will provide you some high-level information of what we're seeing to date. So as a bit of an overview from myself before I turn it over to the manager of the LRT project, as well as our consultant, Steer Davies-Gleve, I just want to take you through a few things that you'll hear today and some things to keep in mind about today's presentation. This is an update. It is really about the approach we're taking to model traffic impacts associated with LRT, and it's a summary of some of our preliminary findings. More information will become available as this moves forward. And it's also important to note that we are using a standard approach to traffic modeling. This is not something unique to our projects. In fact, it's the way that modeling is being done across LRT projects in this province and other places. And as you'll hear from Steer Davies-Gleve, we're actually using similar approaches to the work that was done previously on traffic when this council asked us to complete an environmental assessment process on the LRT in 2010 and 2011. Generally speaking, traffic volumes on Hamilton Road will naturally increase over time due to projected population and employment growth. And it sounds like a fairly obvious statement, but it is actually what we're finding through the modeling. It's interesting to note that this is some of the first modeling that's taken place. It takes into account some of the changes to the roads that have occurred in the last number of years. Generally speaking, because of its cost and time, we don't dig down to the level that this traffic modeling exercise is. So it's a good opportunity for us to see what's happening, whether LRT is built or not, in the communities. The base information about what's happening today and happening as we move towards 2031 are some interesting pieces for you to consider. Certainly, the LRT project, as it's introduced beginning in 2024, will change traffic patterns, the flow of traffic, and the level of service, particularly at intersections. The result of those impacts will require mitigation strategies, and I want to stress that for a moment. There must be mitigation strategies, is what we're learning in the initial work, or else there will be traffic issues to which are unacceptable, not only for the folks that call this place home to work, live, and play, but also from just a traffic movement perspective. However, with proper mitigation strategies, traffic will continue to flow when LRT is in service, because there are mitigation strategies that we feel can be implemented. One of the other questions I often get is, so we have changed a bit of the alignment of the LRT, primarily from side-running, which was the 2011 environmental assessment process we went through, to now a more center-running approach in 2016, the alignment that you saw come forward in May. The information that we've received to date is that it produces similar impacts. So the fact that we have changed the alignment of the LRT is not driving what is happening in terms of our traffic information to date. It is still many of the same issues that we knew were there in 2011, and we are simply updating those to take into account changes to the road network that have occurred since then. As you know, there have been many changes to certain roads in terms of whether they are one-way or two-way, and the introduction to reductions of lanes on certain roads that have occurred since the time of the last traffic study. All important things for us to fit into our base category, and then we start to build it out as population increases over the next 15 years or so. So that's a few points from me, and now I'm going to turn things over to the manager of the LRT project, Trevor Horzelenberg. Trevor first joined Rapid Transit in 2009 and was a key member of the team that was putting together the work and the studies that went into the transit project assessment process. We just simply call it the EA process for the LRT in 2011. So Trevor understands what happened before, and he understands a little bit about how that is producing some similar results in 2016. So Trevor's going to take you back just a little bit in time and talk about the differences between 2011 and today, and then we'll introduce you to our consultants, who are actually the doers around this modeling work. I will say that this is not an isolated activity in the LRT office, nor with our consultants. This is an activity that includes lots of inputs from staff, and particularly our traffic staff. And as we work towards building the solutions and mitigations to the issues of traffic caused by LRT, we'll continue to work with city departments. Because this is a major project, because it has a lot of time and energy that goes into the modeling, our consultants are the doers, as I say, on this project. So over to Trevor, who's going to take you through a little bit of our previous traffic modeling work.
Great, thank you. So I'd just like to remind all committee members here around the table that, again, this isn't the first time we've done this type of modeling work. We did this type of modeling work back in 2010, 2011, and it was part of a general robust model that was actually vetted through our traffic division at that time and worked heavily through that model to make sure we had all the appropriate inputs and made sure that it worked well in the sense... And this previous model identified all those impacts, and some of these impacts, as you can imagine, were on adjacent parallel corridors and some peripheral corridors as well. And there were some proposed changes to some westbound intersections. And again, the model just takes into account all the inputs that we can give it in regards to all the background traffic that we can place in it, and then it spits out. It's a technical exercise that actually gets into the nuts and bolts of how you perceive traffic to move. So overall, as Paul had mentioned, is that the previous design was primarily side-running, but there was always somewhat of a closure in the downtown. So there was a block that was closed to traffic in the previous design. That really restricted any through movements on King Street going westbound. And with that change, and then to our most recent change, which you're aware of, of the side-running, again, and the change of direction in the International Village, what we're seeing is that the previous model and this more recent model are almost mirroring similar type of results, and we'll get into some of those results through our consultant. But really, what it shows is, again, these impacts are getting pushed to parallel and peripheral corridors. However, it doesn't mean that these other corridors could not handle it, and actually, they were accommodated by the existing network without significant impacts at this time in the previous model. However, there was a general reduction in the level of service for traffic throughout the system, and this was recognized in the previous model as well. So at this stage, I'd just like to identify that the previous model was also created by our consultant, who I'll be calling up, Steer Davies-Gleve. And it was through council's recommendation back in the fall that we rehired Steer Davies-Gleve to continue with the amendment to this environmental assessment. And due to their previous knowledge of the model, they were very well kind of at bay, basically ready to hit the ground running with new results. And they used new information, so we had some more traffic numbers, and we've been working very closely with the Transportation Master Plan to ensure we have the right inputs into the model, and we're projecting the model now out a couple more years in regards to that. So again, I'd like to introduce our consultants, who will be doing the remainder of the presentation in regards to the details of this model. The two people that will be presenting are Dennis Fletcher and Karen Carruthers.
Mr. Trevor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. As Trevor mentioned, my name is Dennis Fletcher. I'm an associate with Steer Davies-Gleve, and I'm the project coordinator for the EA update. So not just the traffic components, but the design components and all the other elements of the environmental assessment that we are updating as part of this project. I wanted to take just a minute and give you just a little bit of background on the modeling process. Paul described it a little bit at the beginning as a very conventional type of process. There's basically three steps that we go through. The first is the development and application of the regional model, and that covers the wider area throughout the entire city and even a little bit beyond the boundaries. And this one, this model is consistent with the model that was used for the Transportation Master Plan, and so we work closely with the Master Plan consistency between the models. The primary purpose of the regional model is to give us the ridership and traffic forecasting, and then the inputs from that are used to... or the outputs, I should say, are used as inputs to the smaller, more focused area model, which focuses primarily on the lower city. So the area model takes its inputs from the regional model. It develops more detailed traffic patterns. The regional model only looks at link volumes, volumes on the roadways. It doesn't get down to the intersection level. And that's where the area model comes in, where we look at more detail at the intersections and start to understand how the individual intersections are actually working, and then what changes might be necessary to make to those intersections to provide an optimal level of service. The outputs from that model are used in the third step, which is the simulation model, which focuses on the details of the corridor. And at this point, we're looking at the very detailed level of the intersections and the LRT operation to understand how the LRT will interact with traffic on a stop-by-stop basis, understand where the queues may develop, and what mitigation strategies might be required from that. So that's the three-step approach that we're using. Right now, we're in that middle step. Karen, in a moment, will show you some of the preliminary numbers where we have the base work done, and now we have to look at how to mitigate the results that we've seen to make sure that we've got the optimal solution before moving on to the more detailed work. I just want to reiterate a point that Paul made about the growth in traffic. This is the trend for population and employment, and we've actually been talking about that this morning already. And we see out to 2041, the growth in population up to 779,000, based on the growth plan and the growth of employment as well, up over 300,000. So that's going to drive the traffic increase in our base scenario, as well as in the LRT scenario as well. That's kind of the overview of where we are. I'm going to ask Karen now to take you through a little bit more of the detail and the understanding of where we are in that base case development and what the types of mitigation strategies are that we'll be looking at to optimize the network.
So we've done some initial work, and the outputs from the first iteration, we're seeing patterns that were very similar to the work undertaken in 2010. So once we put in the LRT, we see significant reduction. We see new traffic on King Street Eastbound, where there is the new lane. We see decreases on some of the perpendicular routes due to the restrictions on crossing the LRT alignment, increases in other routes at those particular crossing points that are permitted, increases on parallel routes as traffic is diverted. And the main challenges are at intersections, and we're going to present a bit more detail on that. And the important thing to remember when we're looking at these different intersection impacts is we're presenting a level of service, and the level of service is a measure that categorizes the different levels of delay at intersections. It goes from a Level of Service A, which is the lowest level of delay, to a Level of Service F, which is the highest level of delay. And within the city, currently, Level D is the acceptable level. One of the things in terms of presenting results from a citywide network is what we're presenting here is an average level of delay at an intersection. For example, at a forearm intersection, there could be up to 16 movements, and so we're presenting an average number across that for the purposes of these results. So as it is an average, it's not something that somebody will actually experience directly on the street, because it's an average of all of those different turns. But in the detailed analysis, we are looking at it on a turn-by-turn basis. So the slides we're showing present the most impacted intersections on the network from the first iteration. There are over 450 intersections in the network that we're looking at, so this is the majority of which have minimal impacts. So the intersections that are presented here are... Currently, what we're presenting is the intersections that fall below that threshold of Level of Service D, and we're presenting results for the 2031 AMR. Further work is ongoing on the PM results. So just to confirm again, this is the results of the first iteration, and the primary goal of this work is to understand the impacts. Essentially, we put the traffic into the network, and we see the resultant impacts and delays that occur. This slide that's currently on the screen gives you that high-level overview. Work is ongoing, and we'll be ongoing through the PICs to further refine the results and develop those mitigation strategies. So this table shows the Level of Service, or LOS, for the intersections where the greatest impact was observed for the first modeling iteration when we introduced the LRT. So not surprisingly, a number of the most impacted intersections are directly on the alignment. These are intersections where all movements generally are permitted, so that's traffic is funneled from other intersections where movements as men through traffic is not permitted to that location. So those offline intersections that are in the list are kind of impacted as a result of traffic diverting. So an example of that might mean that as traffic is diverted, a certain movement is increased, and currently, because this is the first iteration, the traffic signals aren't optimized to accommodate that movement. And this is an example where something on this list is, you know, once we work our way down the mitigation measures, for example, traffic signal timing alteration will actually...
If I could, just for the sake of members of council and the public, considering that we're all probably not as smart as you, can you give us just an understanding of the grade system and what that means, just so we have a reference point for what we're looking at?
So the Level of Service is a measure that's presented to categorize the level of delay. So it's calculated on the basis of the kind of delay on each movement. So the A has the lowest level of delay, so potentially, if you come up to an intersection and there is nothing stopping you, that would be an A level of service, and that goes down to a Level of Service F. And there is, I think, the table within the report stating the town categories. So Level of Service F is a category with greater than 80 seconds delay.
Basically, 15 to 20 seconds in between each category incrementally from A to F?
Yeah. And gradually, that, as I said, it's an average across the different movements, but within the city, the D, so we're just looking to kind of... It's just a way of grouping intersections. Primarily, for the purposes of this, we want to look at how much it drops and how much we... Whether it's an acceptable level.
Thank you, Karen. Just needed a little context.
Oh, just on that. So I think just on the LRT, the slide with the intersections where the LRT had the greatest impact, you'll see that there are a range of impacts, and in some cases, it's a drop of four Level of Service categories, which is quite significant, and that's currently showing at the King and Bay, whereas in some places, while it's got worse, it's potentially only a single drop from E to F with the introduction of the LRT. So there are also some intersections where the impact was similar with them without the LRT. You'll notice that if you kind of look at the geographic locations of those, there was a greater spread, and that's generally down to... It was touched upon that there are a number of changes throughout the network, and as the traffic growth over time, there will be a level of congestion on certain intersections, but these ones are congested whether or not the LRT is considered in the analysis. And then the final slide shows where the first iteration has intersections where the level of services actually increases with the introduction of LRT. So while that might seem counterintuitive, the LRT will change traffic patterns within the city, and this change impacts intersections differently throughout the network. There are a number of increases in the level of service actually seen along the LRT alignment, and that is to do with previously, there were a number of turns, and if those turns are removed, if you were making that turn previously, you would have had a delay, because that turn is no longer available to you at that particular intersection, that delay associated with the intersection is removed, and therefore, the level of service increases. So just to be clear again, the purpose of presenting these results is to make everybody aware that it's kind of a stepped process. This is the first iteration. We're wanting to provide this for information, and essentially, this helps us understand the very initial impacts. It's showing similar results to the work we did previously, and these results are a snapshot in time. Work has been ongoing since these results were produced and will continue to be ongoing while we work to mitigate the impacts that are seen here. And what we will continue to do is we're developing additional solutions through the ongoing work. We're starting with things like I mentioned, such as the optimization of signal timing, lane configurations, turn restrictions, levels of priority for the LRT. So that looks at the most impacted intersections and developing the mitigations, and those in turn might have moved the impacts to another intersection. We're obviously working towards an appropriate balance between the impact on road users, LRT users, project aims, and costs. So once we've developed those solutions, we're looking at the microsimulation, so that was the corridor model. We will look to finalize any adjustments, identify any works required to accommodate the LRT, and we'll be providing reports and updates to council.
Thank you, Karen. Certainly appreciate the update.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, just before we take any questions and comments and feedback, one piece that I do get asked on occasion is, so what happens to other routes that are outside of the corridor in terms of costs to do signal optimization if there is capital costs? And some may recall around this table that we worked with MetroLinks in the memorandum of agreement to ensure that the costs associated with traffic mitigation strategies would be an eligible cost under the billion dollars. So if it's a relationship to the introduction of this project, the LRT, then those costs would be eligible. And put that in specifically, because not all of the traffic mitigation strategies may be along the corridor, and it was really important for us to protect that outside the corridor. Generally speaking, the capital costs are within the corridor only.
That's a very important distinction to make, and I appreciate that, given some of the concerns that have been put forward. We have on the speaker's list Councillor Whitehead, followed by Councillor Skelly, and other... Any other takers? Oh, Jackson, my apologies, wrong list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions from the get-go. Steers Davies-Gleve, did the original study, because they were aware of the work they already done, whether there was a mistake in it or not, they continued... I always like bringing something else in because it's a fresh face, and if there are mistakes in the original report, it'd be caught by a new consultant, but we hired the same consultant to continue this work, is that correct?
Through the deputy mayor, yes, council authorized us to continue with Steer Davies-Gleve. The information, though, on the modeling, it's inputs from scratch, so although they understood the modeling from before, the inputs, of course, have all changed since 2011. All change is too strong a word. There have been many changes to the input since 2011, so it's new inputs run, and lots of folks looking over those assumptions, including our own traffic folks.
By my understanding, they did the train from the airport to Towntown, Toronto. Is there other projects that they've done in the last several years that we can look at and determine if their assumptions that they had indicated, you know, five years, 10 years later, have been realized, or if, you know, how accurate those reports were? That's something I should be asking Dennis or Karen directly?
Well, through the deputy mayor, I'm happy to have Dennis come forward and talk about projects that they've worked on in terms of an analysis of the results of those projects. It's not something we have undertaken in any way, but Dennis, do you want to share a bit of the work that Steer Davies-Gleve has done?
Mr. Chair, through you to the councillor, I think we have a number of ongoing projects, which I understand is not specifically what you're looking for, but we also did the ridership forecasting and the design work for the Here Ontario LRT, which is continuing. And we're also working right now on a similar scope of project in Vancouver for the Surrey Light Rail Line. The remainder of our experience where we've actually done the forecasting for LRT, for projects that are in place, is not North American-based. It's been primarily in the UK. And I don't have specific information for you at hand, but we may be able to get you some comparisons.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to... It's always good to go to the consultant, see the work they did, see how the assumptions that they took and the methodology they utilized, whether or not it's been... Came close to the actual practice years later, and I've heard that we don't have an example here in North America. The question I'm going to ask is, you're doing... On modeling, you're basing a lot of this information on assumptions. What is the plus-minus degree of error on this process?
I'll give you a couple of seconds. It's not really done that way. I mean, the model uses a number of assumptions to generate projections, and we're often very careful to correct people when they say what the model predicts, because the model doesn't predict anything. It projects results on the basis of the assumptions that go into place. So it, I mean, it uses the existing traffic volumes, so those were updated from the previous work. We use new existing traffic volumes. It uses standard algorithms around the performance of the intersections. The biggest area, I think, where the assumptions come into play is in that first model, the ME, regional model. That makes a lot of assumptions about how people travel. We had, you know, inputs for 2031 and 2041 reflecting the population growth. That's a key assumption as well. So obviously, if over time, over the next 10 and 20 years, the population and the employment don't materialize in the same way that the model took it as inputs, then there's going to be those changes. And the difference is going to depend on the magnitude of the difference of actual versus what went into the model. But population and employment are the biggest driver of that travel model.
That's any employment, right? That could be a MIC job, or that could be a middle-class job or high-paying job. When you talk about jobs, do you assess the type of jobs within this corridor are being created and how far people will travel for, say, a minimum wage job versus a middle-class wage job?
And of course, that question is through the chair. Please feel free to take your time.
Mr. Chair, to the councillor, the model doesn't specifically distinguish between that type of job, but the base model, which was taken for 2011, which uses the existing employment with all of the mix that's in there, so as well as... with all of the mix that's in there, as well as, and the type of housing is another factor. And it's calibrated to generate the results. So that we put all of that information in, which includes the various mix of employment that's currently in place. And calibrate the model so that it produces results that are as close as we can to the existing conditions. And then when you change the employment, then the model projects what those changes will be. Now, it's true that if there's a disproportionate change in the growth of the employment, so that all of your growth in employment is working at McDonald's and Tim Hortons, then you're going to get a different set of actual results than you'll get if it's high-end tech employment. But assuming that the mix is reasonably homogeneous, then you get results that, you know, that are fairly close to what you might expect. I'd also reiterate that the model is not the final answer. It's something that we use to interpret what the future conditions are going to be like. You know, in terms of the level of accuracy, it gives us a good picture of the overall situation and it identifies what intersections we're going to have to deal with in terms of improving. But there's obviously limitations in a model's ability to predict exactly or project exactly how many cars are going to turn left at a particular intersection 15 years from now.
And I appreciate that. So we establish that with these kinds of studies, there is no degree of error built into these assumptions or through this modeling. That's the answer, right?
Mr. Chair, yes, that's correct.
The other question I was going to ask is, this is only AM, the study that I have before me, is that correct? AM peak hour?
Mr. Chair, yes, that's correct. The PM work is underway right now.
Okay. So also my understanding that, and I'm going to have Ferguson's here somewhere, we've done modeling, believe it or not, on the Lincoln Alexander, Red Hill, Upper James, West 5th, were you part of that?
Mr. Chair, no, we weren't.
You know, those models, the traffic loads on each of those routes are far further than what the actual modeling showed?
Through the chair?
Through the chair. Are you aware of that?
Mr. Chair, I'm not actually familiar with the details of the results, so I can't comment on what those differences are or why they might have occurred.
I believe the scope of work was LRT related.
So the reason I'm asking it, because obviously this is a pretty significant crossroads the city's at in respect to understanding the implications of the traffic changes in our lower city and maybe even beyond. So we have had experiences with modeling on Red Hill, Link, Upper James and West 5th. And the traffic loads have surpassed what was forecasted in the models. So now I'm looking at another model. My comfort isn't all there because, you know, they certainly haven't worked to date on those examples I just cited. Help me understand, have we got better at forecasting these things or we can end up in the same situation?
So through the chair, what I would say is that part of the reason that I mentioned that this is not work being done in isolation strictly with SDG and the LRT office is that we're trying to bring in all of the understandings we've had over time of where things have been off so that if assumptions are being made that we need to clarify, if there's things we learned from other projection projects, we can feed that in. So that's one of the reasons this is going to take a while for us to move through is that in order for all of the staff that are involved and for our consultants obviously to work through this and, you know, the answer is we're trying to get as good as it can be. You point out some examples where things were off. And the goal here is to get as many inputs as we can to understand how we can be at the right enough band. So yes, it's not a scientific piece, whereas I think you and I have talked about polls before where it's plus or minus 3%. That might not be it, but there's certainly a tolerance range. And so we also have to understand what that tolerance range is and maybe do some tolerance testing to say, well, if we were 10% above, what does that look like? If we were 10% below, what does that look like? So those are the kinds of conversations that will come forward. We're trying to learn from what was done in the past so that we can be a little better in the future.
That clarification, Paul. The question I have, and I was asking about jobs, because my understanding, a lot of the modeling is assumption out of the places to grow, the 2041 forecast. And those jobs, as I understand it, and the population growth is for the whole city of Hamilton, is that correct?
Through the chair, we'll continue to be working with the planning department at a global level, yes. These are, as you saw, the population for the whole city. We work with those though and then put them into what you call traffic zones. We put them into the zone work. Again, another group that we work with all the time, write information, are we comfortable? For instance, one of the areas that we're going to have to have some serious conversations with planning is of course, the grids update process is well down the road. So to get to 2041 today, we're not there yet. So how do we work with what 2031 numbers are, look at 2041, have those conversations internally? So planning is a conversation we have to do exactly what you've talked about, which is when we start to distribute those numbers at a global level to the areas, are we making, again, assumptions that make sense based on past performance and future projections?
Appreciate that. So have we looked to date on our current forecast and determined if we are hitting the targets on jobs in that corridor?
Through the deputy mayor, maybe Jason can chime in on that. I don't have an answer for that at the moment. I can get you one unless Jason wants to chime in.
I know on density, and I've already talked to Jason, that we're pretty close. But on jobs, for Hector, have we met the targets in the lower city, the new jobs?
Through the chair, in terms of global jobs citywide, we're fairly much in line with the targets that was, well, that surgery set out in places to grow and that's brought into the official plan. On a corridor specific basis, I'd have to look into that. I can't give you that answer right now as to whether or not we are exactly on in terms of what was allocated to the specific corridor in the grids process.
You don't have the, so you have no idea whether we're on target or not? Is that what I'm hearing at this point?
Citywide, I can say we're on target with the growth forecast. In the downtown core, in terms of the people and jobs forecasts, we are in line. In terms of the intensification rate citywide, whether or not we're hitting approximately our 40% intensification rates, that's about the number we've been around for the last couple of years. So, but specifically the number of jobs in the traffic zones allocated to that specific corridor in the grids spreadsheets, I'd have to go back and look and see where we are at in terms of the actual LRT traffic zone job projection as of this year.
Now, so my question to probably the consultant, if those numbers aren't being reached and we're underperforming on the jobs on the basis of the current grids in places to grow, is that factored into this model?
Mr. Chair, what we're using is the, as inputs for planning for population and employment is, are the numbers that the city has agreed are appropriate. So if there's information that comes forward as this process develops that shows that the growth patterns may be different and there's time to incorporate that within the EA process into our results, then we would do that. But as it is, we're using the numbers and for the traffic, it's the 2031, the 2031 values that as they were agreed and out of the grids network. If that changes, then things will change.
Through the chair, do you do an employment survey to look at the major employers through that corridor to determine where they actually live and where they're commuting from in this modeling?
Through the deputy mayor, there was some work done using census information that was provided. Perhaps we can provide that through all of council if that's helpful. It, because of the census numbers that it used, it wasn't very robust. I think that's a fair way of putting it. So it's certainly something we can take away to give more information about where people are coming from. If I capture the question correctly, it's where are people coming from to jobs that are along corridor?
Yeah, I would think that is an important factor when you're trying to determine what is transpiring in that corridor and where the majority of people are traveling to work, where they're coming from, what services they're using. I would think all that would be important to plug into this model.
We have, Steve Malloy, I think, can clarify?
Through the chair, thank you. Just to clarify, as part of origin destination, we, part of the background data that's an input into the ME model is the Transportation Tomorrow Survey, which is a 5% sample of the population throughout the Greater Toronto, Hamilton area and beyond. And that information is also calibrated with the census data and is operated through University of Toronto. So what they do is they have on a traffic zone level, ward level, all these origin destinations based on trip purpose, trip distance, type of travel that people take. And all that information is distributed into a big data bank that can be drawn into travel, traffic zones that's then put into an ME model, which is then used to distribute traffic throughout the system.
So help me understand, there was original report goes back a number of years, I'm not sure if it was IBI, but it identified that the middle class or the wages over 35,000, majority of those people did not live in the downtown, they were coming from elsewhere. So that's in the model?
Through the chair, it doesn't get specifically into what their wages are. Again, it's a sample transportation survey, which asks people basically where your trip originated, where you're destined to. And then there's algorithms that basically creates the distance that's traveled and what type of mode is traveled. So it's a very complex series of questions that people participate in. And all that information is used into the ME models and helps create through those algorithms where that traffic's being distributed, what type of mode choice is being used.
So I would appreciate looking at that because I know that, I've looked at a lot of information and I haven't found any robust information that accurately reflects what is actually happening in our downtown, who works there, where they're coming from, what's the different wage valuations so that you can determine who's doing the furthest travel and where they're coming from to work in our lower city? We don't have a robust, that census piece isn't, that begs more questions than answers actually. So it's not a good tool to use. So I'd love to see whatever other information we have because I'm still looking.
It is a traffic study, not a necdev study.
Well, actually, no. It actually is, when you're talking about algorithms, you're talking about projecting traffic loads, then this is all important information that needs to be understood and plugged into this process. So it is important.
Thank you, councillor.
The other piece I was going to ask is, our current LOS is a D, is that correct?
Deputy mayor, that's the level, I mean, we'd like it higher than that, but that's a level. If you're aiming for a level, you don't want to drop below, it's D, yes.
So I actually had a motion that I was looking to bring to public works. I held off to September to actually look at a C. Can you describe the difference between a C and a D?
So the difference between, through the deputy mayor, the difference between C and a D is at a signalized intersection, 20 to 35 seconds versus 35 to 55 seconds. So that's the pure difference, whether you pick a middle point and say that's your, I think somebody said it's around 15 seconds probably between each, 15 to 20 seconds, that's the difference we're talking about of those levels. And just for clarity point, what we did in this project is take what was in the transportation master plan and use that as our assumptions. If those change again, to Dennis's point, we'd have to re-input things. But at this point, we're going with what's in the TMP.
The, my understanding is if I can go to Mr. Ferguson, because the actual city definition of the LOS goes a little beyond just the timing factor. Do you have that with it? Do we have that with us?
So we're looking for the definition of the LOS, Mr. Ferguson?
C and D, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, level of service is obviously based on volume and capacity of a roadway, number of lanes, lane width. And as Director Johnson has stated, it's based on the time delay at an intersection. In terms of the actual definition, I don't know if Steve can elaborate on what it is outlined in our transportation.
Steve?
Through the chair, I don't recall it off the top of my head. There's lots of other information in my head, so that definition at the moment eludes me, but I can get back to you.
Fair enough. I didn't mean to catch up, because I figured that information would be here because it pretty supplied it to me a couple of months ago. It really breaks it down and it's more than just seconds. It really describes what it's all about. So I was hoping to get a further explanation on these particular classifications other than just time. Overall, the preliminary modeling exercise identifies that even without the introduction of LRT, the city's roadway network is forecast to become much more congested. Help me understand, have we exercised prudently our approach to our road network in putting and taking lanes out of roadways if we're predicting that we're going to hit congestion with or without LRT?
So through the deputy mayor, I mean, to me there are, when it comes to the LRT project, there become three factors that are at play with traffic. One is around population and employment growth, and we've talked about that. The second is the fact that you'd be introducing LRT and taking out capacity of an arterial road. But the third piece is what's happening to the rest of the road network. And there have been changes that have been made over time. So it's not my place to comment on what the impact of that has been positive or negative. It is to suggest that there are these three elements at play. If you take out LRT and you just say, well, what's the base case? You still have what's changing with the road network and you have obviously the population and employment growth happening. And as you can see from some of the results, the bottom line is that LRT has some impacts, which we absolutely have to mitigate as we implement that project. But without it, there are impacts to our level of service, no matter what. And just on level of service, we did provide a bit of a background with some definitions of how people are impacted by level of service before the table. But because most of our report talked about the impact at intersections, which we see as the major factor that we need to mitigate, it's why we created that table of seconds. So there are some other definitions of how people experience level of service. But back to your question, absolutely, changes to the road network itself is one contributing factor to where these numbers go. And that's what the modeling shows you, right? What your capacity is, as well as some of the other factors that we put in around turning restrictions, closures, those types of things.
So could I ask then, if in fact through this study and you're looking at ways of mitigating, because this is just a preliminary study, this is maybe, I mean, I don't know if it's a worst case scenario because I predict that it's going to be worse than what's here, but that's my own opinion, based on what we've experienced on the mountain. What I want to know though is, you're talking about mitigating, which is great, getting rid of left turns, I think are an example. So what about that individual? What does that do to that individual that traditionally takes that left turn to get wherever they're going in a timely fashion? Now you're taking that left turn out to accommodate that particular intersection, but have you created yet, or another problem, created another domino effect that impacts on that driver that needs to turn left on that particular intersection?
Well, through the deputy mayor, welcome to our long conversations we have on this. You could, what you don't want in your mitigation strategies is say, well, jeez, this is how we get to a level A and cut down everybody's time by essentially making everybody just go straight. That would be a great way to make your level of service hit an A every time. We have to have those movements and you have to have other movements take place. So the mitigation strategies are not meant to then create other problems down the pipe. We're looking at ways that it would be a balance around that. But your traffic routing will change. And I think one of the exercises is, that is a good one that we will look at as we move through this work, is to also talk about travel and route planning and travel times from various parts of the city so that people can understand in a real world sense what it means. It's one thing to look at these intersections, it's one thing to talk about level of service. But what if I live, you know, at Upper Wentworth and Mohawk, what's my route look like as I wish to travel to the general hospital to work? And I think those are the kinds of things that we can do. If I live in Lower Stony Creek today and I tend to move into the downtown core and work there, what does that look like pre and post the work that we're talking about? So I think we'll do some of that. I know we'll do some of that in the future iteration, so there can be some real life examples. And as Dennis mentioned, and Dennis or Karen mentioned, one of the other things we'll do is also be talking about the journey time with LRT as traffic increases as well. Because LRT is impacted by traffic, despite the fact that it's signal priority and it's segregated, it's not signal priority overall else. So if traffic does impact the LRT on occasion, we would be stopping the trains at certain intersections based on traffic volume.
There's a lot of Fs and Es here, and this is the stuff that you're going to work on to bring it up to the D standard. But I'm looking at the time, so if King and Bay, King and Gage, King and Long, King and Queen, King and Sherman, King and Victoria, 80 seconds, 80 seconds, 80 seconds, 60 seconds, 80 seconds. So cumulatively, if I was traveling that route and hitting those intersections, my time is, help me understand this, does that mean my time? my time is, help me understand this, does that mean my time is doubled now on that same journey?
Through the chair, through the councillor, letters as an average delay. And no one experienced an average delay, so if you're going straight through, you could more or less be, it could be an A or a B. It's typically the left turns that are usually the concern at intersections, and the left turns could be an F+. They could be more than an 80 second. So when we get into this, and again, this is just a snapshot at looking at these intersections and looking at the average delay across all movements, is that we actually do dive into those specific concerns at each intersection, and we'll look at each and every kind of movement and see, well, what do we need? Do we need to increase some green left turn time in order to reduce the average for that intersection?
So understanding that question, and I think I've already acknowledged that this is a start, and you're going to be looking at ways to mitigate these travel times, but when I look at this chart, I gave you an example coming down Gar Street, especially when the 403 is jammed, every light, I could wait, you know, clearly two, three minutes, depending on, well, especially if the 403 is out. So it's cumulative. So my journey is more than doubled, and I've expressed that already, from Garth and Stonechurch to City Hall. So having that experience, and I look at this, I said, boy, that'll be the same experience, so it's cumulative. And the time now is just doubled on the same distance, the travel based on this data without mitigating. Would that, is that possible?
Through the deputy mayor, to suggest the increment of it is hard to say, but you're absolutely right. The flow of traffic will be slower, the timing, there's a definite time increase. So our mitigation is how do we deal with some of that? And as I talked about, those scenarios will run for you. It would also then give you some ballpark figure about whether the time is actually doubled, whether it's a, you know, a 20% increase, a 30% increase, those are the kinds of things that happen. But to say absolutely it's a doubling or a tripling of time, it's impossible to say that, but your point is, and reiterated by one of my earlier points, the flow of traffic is impacted, and is impacted in a slowed-down way across some of this, there is an increase in certain movements.
So have we ever did this study, or we have an understanding, for every five minutes longer a person spends in their car, how many days a year that would be away from their family?
Through deputy mayor, I've seen reports to that, we haven't, we haven't undertaken that work. I've certainly heard of those types of analysis before. I think a lot of that's happening in the GTA, just the GTA around commute times. What would you do with the extra 30 minutes of whatever?
MetroLinks that use that number, I think it was 15 minutes equates to eight days spent in your car, something along that line. My point is, is that you're impacting people's lives in the vehicle as well, and I want to make sure that there's a balanced approach. Looking at this chart, I'm going from in many cases, A to an F, B to an F, C to an F, our standard is D. I look forward to the mitigating, because I know this is just preliminary, I know that you're going to work your butts off, and I want to thank both Paul, Trevor, who else was at that meeting?
Jason.
Jason. They were wonderful on Friday morning, you know, I called them on a Thursday afternoon, they showed up at 8:30 in the morning, and they were very helpful, and they're doing great work, so I really want to recognize your accessibility and your helpful answers to the many questions I have. The last question, I did say I was going to ask this one, because it's not here, is that, you know, we've had trouble with Red Hill, flooding, accidents, et cetera. Nowhere in this report does it talk about those exceptional circumstances. We know that movement of goods is important in commerce, and we do have this bleeding-out system, unfortunately, it comes through my ward on the link, on the Gar Street, and so forth, but the stuff is still moving. Where is that built in this modeling when you have a jam up on Red Hill?
So through the deputy mayor, when that question was raised on Friday, it's a, it's a good one for us to take back. I'm not sure it's part of the modeling work per se, because of the one-off nature of it, but we need to, we need to take that back and provide you with some information about what happens in extraordinary circumstances where we have to divert traffic en masse. And so I think that's a great conversation point that we'll have internally to bring you back in future reports, some ideas around that. Same way, people are very interested in movement of emergency vehicles, I think we do need to talk about those, those instances where highway systems are closed for significant periods of time, mudslides, things like that that have happened in the past, and how this system would actually react to that.
Those are my questions. Thank you, councillor, for your patience. I want to thank staff for the great work they're going, or they're working on. I know it's a real challenge, and I will be keeping an eye and grieve the reports, because I'm going to do as much research on the information, and whether it's in Europe or wherever, I really want to know how accurate they're getting it, because everything I read, consultants get it wrong 80% of the time. So I look forward to it.
80% of the time, they're 100% right. And as it relates to delays and unnecessary traffic delays and time away from family, I can sympathize in our meetings as well, so certainly appreciate that. Councillor Jackson, you are up.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and Paul and Trevor. Trevor, good to see you back. And Dennis, Karen, thank you for this update, primarily focused on the issue of traffic modeling. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm going to look to you for your judgment. I have a series of questions, but if today's not the time for this, and it's coming more in the fall, and my questions centering around the marketing campaign of selling the benefits of the LRT beyond the core, MetroLinks presto pass cost, revenue of HSR, surplus buses, would you prefer, is it your judgment and decision that those be held off till the fall?
I will say that we have indulged for the last hour lines of questioning, I'm happy to indulge any questions that you have now. If you would like, or we can wait until the fall, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you for your latitude. Paul, would you be more comfortable with the ones that I've just mentioned, or I know I've had a series of discussions face-to-face and email with you, but if today's more focused on the traffic pattern and the traffic modeling, I will respect that, but I'll put you on notice, if you will, then for the fall. But if you're comfortable today, let me know either way, and I've appreciated the latitude of the deputy mayor.
Through the deputy mayor, today was about traffic modeling. The one thing I will say is that knowing some of the questions are related to MetroLinks as well, Andrew Hope, who is always here and is a great fixture around this table, today does have important meetings in Toronto that he needed to attend. So I, you know, in some of those ones, I would prefer that Andrew and I can tag-team the answers for you. And happy to, the other piece is around operational issues, presto and those other types of things, we don't have a lot of an update that I could provide you today. So I think maybe a notice of some of those pieces could be sent to me, and then we'll make sure. We are building up to an LRT special GIC, I know, in October, and some of the committee meetings there, so we could be able to address those more fully. I'm happy always to answer questions, but I just want to be helpful, and I'm not sure I can be fully helpful today.
Paul, you've, I've always appreciated the sincerity of your thorough answers. So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, again, I thank you, but I will hold those off. I'll send you a summary list of questions that I will be looking for answers for, and just putting on notice, again, the marketing campaign, where has it been in terms of beyond the core, MetroLinks, the presto pass costs, revenue at HSR impact potentially with an LRT, surplus buses for the mountain. Those should not be a surprise to you, Paul. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll just start by saying, I don't, I say with great respect, I don't envy where the five of my colleagues that'll have to deal with the localized issues on this LRT project, the mayor, of course, and councillors, Ian Johnson, yourself, councillor Farr, councillor Marilla, I truly, I say this very respectfully, I don't envy in terms of the localized issues that this type of presentation has shown today that you may be needing to deal with down the road, and I know all of you are already doing that with your constituents, probably there'll be more to come down the road. Could you turn to slide seven, please, Paul? And maybe then Dennis or Karen can help me on the construction issue. LRT under, slide seven.
Sorry, I don't have numbers.
Seven is the one about employment projections, Paul?
Yep.
Population and employment, there we go. LRT under construction, does that include construction jobs? Because this project, what is, what a five, six, seven-year project, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, is that construction jobs, or those kind of having an end date aren't part of this, Paul?
Sorry, we should have mentioned this through the deputy mayor, this is really just laying over the phases of the LRT project with the growth projections on it. So the LRT under construction, that's just the 2019 to 24 phase that we are in. So yes, some of those construction jobs will be there, and we need to, we need to figure out how that factors in a little bit. So the phasing is there, we didn't do any major uptick to the numbers, we didn't factor that in per se, so, but it would include obviously a period of time around employment, some 3,500 jobs or so, but in terms of where those come from and how those manifest themselves, we're not entirely sure on that.
Thirty-five, so Paul, can you then maybe revise and redefine this particular graphic for when you come back at the fall, please? In terms of, are you saying potentially 3,500 jobs within the five-to-six-year construction period? Or is that a combination of jobs that are projected, come new investment on the corridor, et cetera? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Paul?
Through the deputy mayor.
Today, Paul, but I'm trying to just get even a high-level understanding.
Completely understand. Through the deputy mayor, those are the jobs that are estimated to be created by the LRT project itself. It's a calculation of the person years of employment, and it is at that, at that rate on a job of this size. It was based on our previous project, but the size of the projects are relatively the same, we've just changed the track alignment on it. So we're still in those ballparks, and we can certainly, we can certainly update figures for you.
Person years, I know that's a theoretical, if you could then narrow that down in the fall, 3,500 person years means exactly 475 actual jobs. Paul, if you could do that, especially for the everyday listener on this matter, that'd be great. Next slide, Paul. So let me understand, I'll keep going, Paul, sorry, for the ones that are showing the actual, thank you, the roads. So let me understand, Paul, Hunter at Wellington, and again, please bear with me, Mr. Deputy Mayor, not being on the LRT subcommittee, not having the more regular type of updates from staff that the subcommittee would have. Layman's perspective, Hunter at Wellington, going from an A to an F. So when the LRT is built, somebody traveling along Hunter at Wellington will have roughly how much longer of a wait? Did you say on average 15 seconds?
So I'll answer this, this piece to the deputy mayor, no, you'd be dropping at that level to more like a 60 or 70-second difference on average. May not be all movements experiencing that, so all the caveats we've just gone through, through councillor, but that is one of those ones where, you know, if you want a flashing red light that goes off in our head when you're moving from an A to an F, that's, that's a major league need for a mitigation strategy around this. So again, this is without any mitigation, we, these are the ones that would catch our attention significantly for change.
So Paul, and again, I know probably MetroLinks and these kind of studies deal in so many theoreticals, hypotheticals. If I had a town hall meeting, and I said in front of a couple of hundred constituents that with the LRT up and running, the only change at Hunter at Wellington, they'll only experience roughly about a one-minute further delay. Would I get some jeering from the crowd? Would I kind of get some skepticism? I mean, that just seems like very, very optimistic, but is that truly what other LRT projects in other communities that are up and running have shown, and your best guess for here? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you?
Through the deputy mayor, I think at this point, it's, it's too early to say to anyone, this is what it means. These are examples of where we have to go and do some work. There's a significant change happening, if we use your example, which is a great one. If you're traveling and you regularly travel at Hunter and Wellington, what this says to me is that we have a challenge we must address. And you can see the absolute change that that is. I wouldn't want to go so far as to quantify that at the moment, but what this shows you is that this is not a situation where there's some minor things we have to adjust and everything works perfectly. This is, as this becomes real, these are the realities of what we'll have to talk through. And what we would hope to bring you is more accurate information about journey times along there, so that you would be able to say, in the morning peak, in the afternoon peak, we may be talking about three minutes, five minutes, seven minutes, whatever that minute calculation is, or in some cases, it's actually going to be the same, if not less. Because of over 400 intersections, you've got, you know, if there's 40 there or 50 there, it's probably there. So we're into a scenario where the majority are okay, we've got to work harder the ones. And of course, the ones that are on these lists are major intersections, so we understand their importance.
Thanks, Paul. I'm not, I'm not looking for negative data, but I'm looking for realistic data eventually for the everyday citizen of our community. And just piggybacking on that, Paul, looking at further down there, Main and Victoria, second from the bottom, C to F, and if you flipped over to the next slide, Barton at Victoria, the reason why I point out those two, as you know, our General Hospital is tops in the country, especially in terms of cardio care. So Paul, what I'm wondering is, and again, if somebody can give me an intelligent comment at this stage, Mr. Deputy Mayor, so I've got a constituent on the mountain, senior citizen that'd be more vulnerable to heart problems, issues, emergencies. Now with the LRT in place, you're going from a C to F on Barton at Victoria, you're going from a C to F on Main at Victoria, and that senior, that constituent is being rushed down, and as we all know, every second, every minute counts with cardio care. So I'm not trying to be melodramatic, but I'm trying to, again, further understand a real-life scenario, Paul, such as that. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, please.
So through the deputy mayor, a couple of things in terms of emergency response to ensure happens well. What's interesting about the example is that regardless of the project going, showing a lowering of that level of service, so without LRT, the projection is that it's going to be at that level F as well as with LRT. I would suggest to you at Barton and Victoria, it's really about turning movements that are the major impact. So if you're, if you're heading down Victoria, whatever, that's probably less of the impact. The impact is always going to be turning, because if we think about where the parallel routes are going, the question then, of course, is, and I've stated this before, how do we get people back north and south? And those tend to be the areas where we are going to have to look at either reducing perhaps some turns and helping people at better intersections to turn, or signal timings on those turns and so on and so forth.
Okay. Main and Victoria is C to E to F, so without LRT, not quite as bad. Okay, those are my traveling modeling questions for now, and I've served notice to Paul on some of the more serious questions in terms of citywide impact and benefit overall, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll be looking for answers for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Jackson. We have on the speakers list councillors Conley, Skelly, and Mayor Eisenberger. Councillor Conley, the floor is all yours.
I'm looking at more of the bigger picture as far as traffic on the, in the whole city, and especially, I guess, on the mountain. And are you doing any modeling to see what the effects of traffic will be because of the LRT on the mountain?
So, yeah. So the, the different steps of modeling we showed, so the ME modeling, sorry, the regional model, so that's the model that's used for the Transportation Master Plan as well, that covers the wider area, and that does take account of people diverting from kind of the downtown area and the accesses they use. So it captures an element of what goes on in the mountain, it's not in this specific detailed intersection modeling, but we're aware of the, the kind of magnitude of change on the accesses on and off.
I haven't shown that through the chair, you haven't shown that modeling yet.
No, so it's, it's part of what, when we review it, the traffic impacts, we look at that high level first, and then what we're trying to do is, is kind of present some initial results on the intersection, but emerging, emerging results are along the lines that the, there are, there is traffic diversion, but it's, it's small and can be kind of accommodated within the areas, but that can be presented in terms of the differences.
I think you're going to have, just personally, a lot of changes on the mountain with it, because it's not just the accesses, but it's how you get to the accesses, or how do you avoid the downtown because of maybe traffic? So I think there'll be a lot of things you could and should review so that there's no surprises. Everybody thinks the impact is all downtown, or not, down the lower city, not downtown. But, and I think there's more to it than that, and I don't want to be, be perceived as just looking at downtown.
If you don't mind, councillor Ferguson, sorry, David might have the answers to that.
I really don't care who answers it, as long as somebody can.
I think we'll pitch it over to the traffic guy.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to note on councillor Conley.
Just to note on Counselor Conley, some of that information will also be covered under the traffic management plan, so that'll be taking into account the LRT project, so the traffic patterns on the mountain will be looked at.
The TMP's coming in the fall, right?
Through the chair, the intent is for late fall, but again, working with the timing of the LRT project, we need to make sure that our messages are in sync and that we're both working from the same information.
Well, through the Deputy Mayor, the information is flowing more now from the TMP into our model. It will flow back to the TMP to answer some of what you're talking about, so our results on LRT will inform that, which informs the broader network. So Steve and Dave are talking, you know, quite rightly about, we've timed out the TMP and the LRT piece because there is this broader impact which needs to be understood, otherwise both projects could be out of sync, and then you end up with not good planning around it. It's the complex nature these days, and you'll see it as we move towards 2031, no matter what happens, of the need to ensure that all of these inputs are actually put into more and more of this modeling work, just with the increase of traffic.
Through the Deputy Mayor, is there going to be a time in this process, and I do appreciate what you're doing today, that we'll have traffic studies as far as, on an average day, going down Main Street, there's 25,000 cars, and coming up King Street, there's 15,000 cars, and I'm just throwing numbers out, I've got no idea what they are, and knowing those impacts now, project what you're going to do with all those cars in the future.
So through the Deputy Mayor, short answer is yes, those go into the model, so we can tease out some of those. So you've got some of the global numbers. In terms of what happens with that, that's exactly what we'll be driving to in the final traffic report, is where that goes, what it looks like, and the mitigation strategies that we feel are important.
And again, it's just my thoughts, but I would assume probably that people coming off going down Main Street might take the alternative and go down the link. And has been any thought of the traffic patterns that would happen from the 403 to, not necessarily Main Street, but to the link, for instance? Through the Deputy Mayor.
Through the Deputy Mayor. With this read, we've actually added some capacity going eastbound on King Street, and so the model is starting to spit out that there's actually additional capacity going eastbound. So we're not seeing that in the model necessarily, and again, we're still refining the model. We've only done the AM, so once we see PM, maybe there's some changes, and maybe there will be some use of, like you say, the link or the circular highway network around the city, but again, that's what we evaluate in the model, because we just throw all the inputs and see where traffic ends up dispersing.
And my last question, and it's just, really worried about residential streets taking a bigger load, through the chair, of the traffic, because you know how we all are the same. We want to take the shortest, so we can, instead of staying on the main roads, we'll take a shortcut through neighborhoods. And if that happens, I know there'll be a big uproar from the neighbors. Have you thought of that, or are you going to add, or whatever?
So through the Deputy Mayor, absolutely. Cut-through traffic is a concern, no matter what changes you make, when it's a concern during construction, it'll be a concern after the LRT project is completed, so that's top of mind. And what's useful of the updates, and what I appreciated about the Subcommittee and have appreciated today, is that some of the comments, to which we don't have a distinct answer to, good for us to know what we should be thinking about, because we want to bring back in the final piece, most of the answers to most of the questions. So your comments about the highway access on and off, and what the pushback might be to the link in the Red Hill, or how they're coming off Main Street with increased capacity on King, those are helpful things for us to move around. So I really appreciate the things we should be thinking about as we move forward, and you've raised a couple of very good ones there for us.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Conley, for your questions. Counselor Skelly, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Through the chair, how many cars, what does your data indicate in terms of how many vehicles, cars, trucks use the current route today versus '24 and '31?
Through the Deputy Mayor, we'll provide those. We don't have them off the top of the head, so I'm not going to just throw guesses today, so we'll provide those. It's clearly a question we want to have, that global number. We've been working it through the model, but we'll get you those global numbers for sure.
You don't have the number of vehicles that go travel on these routes. Can you get them, like, quickly? It'd be nice to know. Is it going up significantly? Is there a huge decline with the introduction of the LRT? What do you predict? There's got to be, it's a pretty important
Well, through the Deputy Mayor, I mean, we have those numbers. To break them out in that, we haven't done that today for you, so we can get those in fairly short order. In general, traffic is increasing. So in terms of the truck, I don't want to comment too much on that, because breaking out the trucks is a little different, but in terms of overall traffic, we project an increase over the period from now until 2031.
So through the chair, the LRT is not taking vehicles off the road. We're not going to see a decline in any traffic through these, one of the most important parts of building an LRT is to get traffic off the road. We're seeing an increase in traffic.
Well, through the Deputy Mayor, most of that is just a general population increase. The LRT project will take some cars off the road, but it's not in comparison with the overall growth and the volume of cars that are on our streets. The LRT alone, no.
We don't know the numbers, and we don't know, we're talking about a $50 billion, or sorry, a billion-dollar expense, and it's really for job creation, but we don't know what the jobs, the specific number of jobs that will be created along the route will be. My next question is, when you did the study, did you take into consideration the fact that MAC is moving, McMaster Hospital is moving, and were those numbers calculated on that? Were they based after the announcement, or are these pre-McMaster?
So through the Deputy Mayor, the modeling had begun before that announcement was there. It's new information, which we could certainly put in. I think I'd need to know a bit more from McMaster, too, about whether that, there's a net replacement of some of that, but in terms of the traffic movement, it is significant because right now, as a children's hospital at that location, it has a movement of traffic which is different than what it might become in the future. So it's new information that we will have to talk about how significant that is to include into the future modeling. I would suggest it is, but we'll have to talk about that.
I would suggest, through the chair, it's very important. It's the anchor location at the end of the route, and it is a huge employer for the city, and of course, we have a number of people that have children in the hospital and are patients of the hospital, so I would suggest that there's got to be a huge, it would have a huge impact on the study. Would you not say it would have a huge impact on the traffic configuration?
Well, through the Deputy Mayor, potentially, but of course, McMaster University as itself is always looking to expand. Their campus master plan has a number of new things coming online for the campus, so the fact that that could be available for other uses, it would not be obviously the type of hospital it is today, but the fact its use, it's not being taken out of circulation at all. To your point about traffic circulation in general, it is a different pattern. If it is no longer a children's hospital but part of the university infrastructure, the traffic pattern in and out changes because, you know, the timing of day when more people are arriving may change as well. So there is a significant impact, but I'm not sure it's, you know, you're just taking something out, to which we need to understand that there may actually be much replacing it, which we need to know a bit from McMaster. All of that's a bit early, though. I have spoken to the leadership team at Hamilton Health Sciences, and again, this is their strategic direction, but not in place, and so we've agreed that there needs to be lots of communication over the next couple of years to understand what the impacts would be to that, and the impact to whatever campus that lands on at the end of the day for their children, and I understand Children's and Women's Hospital at the end of the day.
Through the chair, thank you, and I appreciate that, and I know this has certainly come up prior, after we began planning this, the LRT, but I think it's a crucial component, and we can't just simply say that, you know, it's something we will include. I think it's going to have a huge impact on our plan as we move forward. And I also think it's very, very important to point out that we are not going to see a drop in the number of cars or trucks along that route, that they're only going to increase even with the LRT. Thank you.
Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you, and I appreciate the report, Paul, and just to make sure that we're all 100% clear, and that I'm 100% clear, I'll ask the question again. So what you've essentially done on this modeling is you've taken LRT and dropped it on our existing road network, and said, this is what the impacts we assess right now, without doing any changes at all. That's essentially what you've done today.
Through the Deputy Mayor, all of the results are without mitigation, so this is what it would be without those mitigation pieces employed.
Well, all you've done, just to be clear, you've drawn in the line for LRT, and you've made an assessment as to the impacts on the intersection, based on that, without looking at any other mitigating factors, without looking at changing anything, you're going to be coming back with that later to determine what mitigating things we need to do to make improvements in all of those intersections.
Through the Deputy Mayor, absolutely. So we've always mentioned, it starts with, what does the model show us? And it's the model not just of the LRT being dropped in, but what the lane reconfigurations look like, closures to road, right in, right out, other things that council has decided or is imminently implementing in terms of road networks, and all of that information is churning out. You can call this the worst-case scenario across a small band of the intersections, and we see intersections as the core. The other message, I think, is intersections are our challenge. It's less about moving things east-west, it's about those intersection movements, and that's where the real work begins. It's about solutions, and that will take us a while.
Right, correct. And so, and you know, to the point that was made just a moment ago, I mean, we have projections that our traffic is going to increase whether we do LRT or not. It's going to increase. We're going to have more roads and trucks on our roadways in the absence of LRT, and if we put in LRT, that's still going to be the case, although it probably reduced the overall number, it still will be the case.
Through the Deputy Mayor, yes, that's what the projection shows.
I do appreciate, by the way, you know what, and we tend to get into, well, I'm not going to call it a game of gotcha, but I think appreciated when we have either at DEX or at Portz, you know, before us, that if we have questions, that we, you know, somehow give our staff the opportunity to prepare an answer, because sometimes it seems like we're playing a game of gotcha. Well, you don't have that number? Why don't you have that number? Well, go and get that number. Well, I mean, I'm sure the number is there at some level, it's just that we don't always have the immediacy, and if members of council would give some forewarning as to what the question might be, that would certainly help streamline the process. So I think it's incumbent on all councils, as Counselor Jackson did, kind of forecast the kind of questions, concerns that he's going to have going forward, give our staff the time, the appropriate time, to formulate the appropriate answers that need to come back to us. I think that is enormously helpful. As difficult a journey as this is going to be, we don't need to make it more difficult. So I would hope that folks would think about working with our staff, and all of us, in terms of streamlining this process and getting the answers to them, or questions to you as soon as we can, so they can come back here with appropriate answers. Lastly, let me say, you know what, there's a lot more work to do on this. I would suggest that, you know, we keep going and come back with the modeling that I think will indicate mitigating factors that will improve, I think, transportation. It's also fair to say that we're not excluding any area that would impact the traffic modeling in our entire city. I mean, obviously, we're doing the transportation master plan, you're doing the LRT modeling overload, overlay, they are interconnected, they're not separate and apart.
You will know, I think an information update went out, that part of the reason that the timing was realigned between ourselves and the TMP is exactly to that point. They are together, and there was no point about, in the TMP, putting a box over a certain area and saying, "to be determined for the LRT," and no point in us doing our work and then having the TMP already completed and not being able to show the impact to that to the TMP. So that's why the two are working together, and we couldn't be happier about that.
Appreciate that. So this is worst-case scenario. Some have asked about impacts of other issues that may happen in our community. So, W jams up. Are we modeling on that basis? Is there a jam up on the 403? Are we looking at what happens to the traffic loading and what happens? I mean, is that all part of the modeling, or is that more like disaster management?
Well, through the Deputy Mayor, I think what we'll take away is, it's tough to model for every eventuality, because we could be modeling for a decade or so, just running every type of scenario, but I think it is important to take away those types of things and say, so what do we feel? It may not be that it can run through a full modeling exercise from top to bottom, but we can provide some detail with our traffic folks, and if we need to talk to emergency management about how we would deal with those instances, and I liken it to the same questions that we're having, which are really important about, so how do emergency services work with the new alignment and the LRT? So it's those same types of conversations we can have.
Paul, I mean, you know, we can't model on every eventuality that's out there. I mean, if we have a hurricane in Hamilton, and you know, a part of the mountain gets wiped out, we can't model on that basis. Correct?
Through the Deputy Mayor, no, it would be, the changes to the model would be major things that you might contemplate, that we would need to put in. A major change to another major road, we need to model that in, but you can't model every eventuality, because we don't know what those are.
I appreciate that, and I thank you. I think we need to be clear about that. So thank you, thank you, Paul, thank you to the staff for the great work, and I look forward to future reports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Counselor Farr.
I was anticipating that. Thank you. Here are a few brief questions, and Paul, I appreciated hearing you say, it's committees like this where you appreciate that, you know what you should be thinking of, your group and the many people, talented people behind you, as well as those from MetroLinks as you move forward. Certainly, Counselor Conley had a few good questions, and it got me thinking about when we had the conversations in Ward 2 about LRT. For the most part, very productive, and a lot of thumbs up as it relates to the higher-order transit nature of LRT. Not all, and certainly, we have those conversations, too, with those folks, but cut-through residential street traffic is of concern, and, you know, neighborhoods, I'm enjoying watching them already address that issue well ahead of time. There are many speed humps in the hopper, and many, many have already been put in place, and they continue to come, these requests, so that's one way the neighborhood is making requests to deal with cut-through traffic as it exists today, let alone it as an issue down the road. So I appreciate that, and I know you guys are listening. Just two questions. Through you, Chair. Up at the Command Center, we have, and it may go to Ferguson, this question, we have this latest technology that addresses issues in real time, and at these intersections of which we're focusing on today, have we incorporated in this study, or will we in October come back and talk about how we use these new technologies that are in place right now in Ward 6 to help us mitigate? Through you, Chair.
So through the Deputy Mayor, I'll give a global answer, and I think Dave can chime in as well. We want to work on a whole bunch of fronts with our traffic management system, and so we are integrating how we can work with those, the intersection technology that we have, and how our signals, for signal priority with LRT, will actually work with our overall traffic system. So the technology we're using for traffic management across the whole city is what we want to integrate with the LRT project, and Mr. Ferguson, I'm sure can add a bit more of the nitty-gritty detail to that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it's something that we are working with the LRT office. We will evaluate and determine how the system can be of assistance in addressing some of these issues and trying to mitigate the traffic concerns on those intersections.
And just for those who may not know, Dave, can you explain, we're talking about cameras at intersections and flipping switches at home base in Ward 6 that allow lights to last longer and those sorts of things. Can you explain what that text is about?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so the Traffic Management Center houses our main control system for traffic signals, video cameras and radios at intersections allows us to communicate, allows us to see the intersection, see how it's operating. If there are issues that are coming up, we're able to make modifications to signal timings at that intersection. Saves us an incredible amount of time and effort having this system. Of course, it's in its infancy at this point, but as we begin rolling out and accommodate the LRT, we'll be able to address many of those issues.
And you're rolling that out, that's a council mandate. Through you, Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the report, and thank you for being there, whether it's committee or otherwise. or otherwise, to answer our good questions in advance, or after the fact, or even, in this case, during. So I appreciate it. And also for heeding the call and understanding, with this particular issue, our general issues committee was a much better forum than our LRT subcommittee, so I appreciate that as well, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Farr, and I appreciate your patience and your stamina and your legs to stand. We do have second-time speakers in Counselors Whitehead and Skelly.
Thank you. Well, for clarification, I did meet with staff, and the examples I cited were the examples I cited, like, for example, the modeling on West 5th, Red Hill. So there's no surprises, I want to make this clear to the mayor, there's no surprises to staff, because I did indicate I was going to ask those questions. In fact, I think I prefaced my question, you know this was coming. So I want to make sure there was no gotcha moment for me at all. I worked with staff, they knew what was coming. Secondly, the question that hasn't been asked, and it sort of touched on in the master plan, when they talk about catastrophes, I mean, I thought that was a bit funny, because no one's talking about catastrophes. We're talking about everyday experiences. Let's be clear. On the 403, it's an everyday experience where you will have a shutdown for whatever reason, and the traffic comes through Ward 7 and 8 to bypass the 403 hill access. On the Red Hill, you could have a burnt truck, an accident, lanes are closed, you're going to have impact. These aren't catastrophes, and this is a major corridors for movement of goods and commerce. And even the MTO builds in redundancies, detours, and so forth, to ensure that that traffic and that commerce continues flowing on alternative routes. So clearly, when we're building something, and we understand the implications of what we're building, I would think that that would be one of the considerations in respect to Red Hill. For example, people may want to avoid the traffic loads along that corridor and be more people using Red Hill. I don't know. Did you, was that modeled, or is that going to be part of the master plan, or is that separate from what's going on here?
Well, through the deputy mayor, I think the point is well taken, and as I mentioned to you, one-on-one as well, we need to take that back and decide how best to put that in. Is it for it to be done through the LRT process, is it to be done through the TMP process? So I think what you're talking about, I'll stand by, we can't model every eventuality in the world, because you know that to be true, too. But in terms of the tolerances we have to occurrences that are more frequent, it's also why I'm working with, in particular, the fire chief, to ask about, you know, frequency of visits and locations where, you know, they may be taking bigger trucks and ladders and things, so we can understand the impact that that may have, because if that closes down major parts of the road to put the ladder up and do those types of things, we need to understand that as well. So I'll take it away, I don't have an answer for you today, but the point's been well made, that we should be looking at some of those pieces as part of our...
And I got to think that it would be important to the mountain counselors, that we understand the implications along the Red Hill and the Lincoln Alexander, because as you know, if it gets jammed at the 403, whose neighborhoods are they driving through? So we don't have those numbers, it wasn't projected here, and I think it should be part of the LRT, because it'll be additional impact, whatever that degree might be. It might be minor. I'm not suggesting that it's going to be huge, but we need to have at least a clear understanding. And I think that's a fair question, as a mountain counselor who gets impacted by these issues, it's fair for me to ask. The other question I was going to ask is on the mitigating. You know, we heard from Mr. Ferguson, and let's be clear, if you have major congestion, they do the best they can to optimize the flow, but it will have a domino, or could have a domino effect. So if you're trying to speed up one area, you're going to have an impact on another. Is that a fair comment?
So through the deputy mayor, doing those types of things absolutely have an impact. The goal of the mitigation strategies would not be to have that sort of ping-pong ball approach to it. The mitigation strategies would be to overall improve the level of service or the experience in certain intersections or certain parts along the route. Then if some real-time changes need to take place, sometimes those do have knock-on effects. But the mitigation strategies will not be to try and solve one thing in one area and say, you know, to heck with the others.
Now, in the consideration for mitigation, you know, we've had recent roads that are, you know, we've actually taken two lanes and made it one. We've have, we created bike lanes to take laneways of a road, or certainly capacity of a road networks. In your modeling and in your mitigation, is that beyond reason for reconsideration through this process?
So through the deputy mayor, nothing that we've uncovered to date suggests that there needs to be changes to, significant changes to the road system outside of what we're talking about in terms of mitigation, which is generally around potentially widening some turning opportunities, signal timing, and those types of things. If we were to uncover that, we would be bringing it forward to you for consideration. If there's one other piece that I'd make, is that we need to understand any major changes that will be contemplated and run that through this process, because we will come up with a set of mitigation strategies that are based on the model that we've been running, which has tons of inputs from the TMP and council decisions and all the pieces that we know. But if there's a piece we didn't know, or as Counselor Skelly points out, happened after we started the process, we could potentially have to go back and rerun it. Not everything will require that, let me be clear, but certain things could, if that was to come to fruition. But at this point, there is nothing, we would have been bringing that forward to you very quickly if we felt there was a major piece of infrastructure you had already undertaken that needed to be undone.
So my understanding is that the infrastructure undertaken to date hasn't gone through this modeling exercise, is that correct?
Through the deputy mayor, it has.
No, no, the stuff that's already been implemented, what the impacts that has had, was never done before it was implemented, is that correct?
All through the deputy mayor, not always our changes run through this type of a full model, no.
So we talked about, at that meeting, we talked about trip analysis. So we know that, for example, there's a lot of people on the mountain and Caster that work at Hamilton Health Sciences, at the General Hospital, and I'm getting calls from them, because now we've got one lane on Herkimer, their time is delayed, because that's the access they use to get down there. So obviously, they got to look for alternatives, I mean, Upper James is a nightmare, so it's not an alternative. Is that being looked at through this process, and how the LRT, the load there will impact those trips to Hamilton Health Sciences?
So through the deputy mayor, we'll try and provide some typical routes. We can't do everybody's, but we'll look at where people are coming from, based on, I think, some of those destinations to places of employment looking. So we'll look at some of that. And we've included everything that we know of in terms of the road network. If things change along the way, we'll keep an eye on that, obviously, to ensure we discuss whether we need to rerun a model or not.
You did talk about doing other trip-type exercises, destination points by vehicle. You will look at the actual time travel today versus what it may be with all your mitigating things implemented.
Through the deputy mayor, yep.
I really appreciate that. Actually, it gave me the comfort level to better understand the implications. Thank you.
I don't believe there's any more first-time or second-time speakers. I just want to make the comment that I appreciate you guys coming in the summer to present this. It's better to unpack this stuff now than have it wait and build up for future meetings. And so certainly a lot of questions. We do have Counselor Ferguson.
Move to receive. Seconded by Pearson. All those in favor, carried. Thank you very much. Feel free to stretch, stretch your legs, shake it out, whatever you got to do.
We are now...